Okay, so we will... Well, we had a pre-session meeting, which in effect was called to order, but we'll now call to order our special meeting of the September 27 planning and zoning meeting. So first item is roll call.
Commissioner Height.
Commissioner Teta.
Here.
Commissioner Polin.
Here.
Commissioner Shernick.
Here.
Commissioner Goldberg.
Here.
Commissioner Flig.
Here.
Commissioner Bruno.
Here.
Okay, any communications from Jenny Marsh, our Planning and Development Services Director?
No.
Okay. This is a public hearing, and we have a public invited-to-be-heard section of all of our meetings. Jane is going to see if anybody has signed up. The way it works is that you come forward, you get five minutes total, four minutes of a green light, one minute of a yellow light, and then I cut you off at the red light. Seeing nobody in the audience that is not either an alternate commissioner or part of the applicant's group. Jane, anybody signed up?
There is.
There are some people signed up.
Are they in the other room?
Are they... Is there anybody still in the other room? Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, Bob McLaughlin is who we're looking for.
Chairman Shernick, I'm pretty sure Bob was here for the other item.
Oh, okay.
So I corralled him from signing. Jane can check, but I'm pretty sure he's not here for that.
Yeah, it looks like Jane's talking to him right now.
We had several folks, all the folks that came in to sit down actually were here, but they thought the other piece started at 7:00, not 6:00.
Oh.
So Brian and Erin will meet with them, go back and do that with them, because those are folks, I think, largely from the historic East Side neighborhood, so we'll go back and catch up with them.
Okay, great.
Firm, he does not want to speak.
And he does not want to speak. Okay, so seeing nobody else coming forward, we'll close the public invited-to-be-heard. We do not have minutes available from the September 27th, 20th meeting, so we'll skip item number five on the agenda, and the next item is number six, Anderson RV Concept Plan and Annexation Agreement Amendment, PZR 2017-32, with senior planner Karen Bryant. Take it away, Karen.
Chairman Shernick, commissioners, so Karen Bryant, Planning and Development Services. This is... The application before you is a concept plan and annexation agreement amendment. The corresponding resolution is PZR 2017-32. Planning commission's role is to... You are a recommending body in this case, so you are reviewing the proposed concept plan and annexation agreement amendment, and then making a recommendation to city council. And you can either just recommend approval, recommend approval with conditions, or recommend denial. So the project itself is... Just to kind of give you a general idea of where it's at, this is the Vance brand airport. This is Airport Road, Hoover and Nelson Road, so it's the property within the red circle. And the proposal itself, it's approximately 15 acres, and what the applicant is asking for is to amend the concept plan and annexation agreement to allow for uncovered storage. The current zoning on the property is planned unit development industrial, and the allowed uses are all of the uses within the BLI zoning district, as well as commercial storage of boats, travelers, RVs, et cetera, that is covered. So... So just a little background, this property was annexed into the city in 2016. At that time, one of the conditions of approval of the annexation was that all storage on the site would be covered. And so that is... In your packet was the original Planning and Zoning Commission resolution with that condition, as well as the ordinance. The property has had several owners since 2006, and currently the property is not in compliance with the approved concept plan and the approved development plan, in that there is uncovered storage in the center portion of the property. And so the applicant has been working since they purchased the property to bring the site into compliance, focusing specifically on the perimeter landscaping and buildings. And if the concept plan amendment is approved, then they will need to also go back through and amend the PUD development plan. Just a little background on how we got to where we are now. So Envision Longmont Conformance, in the plan itself, land use designation is mixed use employment. A primary use within that district is indoor and screened outdoor storage, so it is in compliance with Envision Longmont. Staff has reviewed the application and does find that it does meet the common review criteria, as well as the additional review criteria for concept plan amendments. And staff did go into more detail in that in the staff report, and if you have any questions about those, I would be happy to answer them. Staff is recommending conditional approval of the concept plan amendment and annexation agreement amendment. And the conditions that staff is proposing is, the first one is that all remaining comments and issues identified by the DRC be addressed prior to this going before city council. The applicant has already submitted, resubmitted with responses to staff comments, and that is currently in review at this point. So they are already working towards that condition. The second condition is that all of the remaining perimeter landscaping approved as part of the PUD development site plan be installed prior to any uncovered storage occurring on the interior of the property. And then the third one is that all of the remaining perimeter buildings approved as part of the PUD development site plan be constructed prior to any uncovered storage occurring on the interior of the property. I would just like to point out that there is uncovered storage on the property right now, and staff is not advocating that they have to remove all of that. These two conditions are being placed so that if at any point the applicant does not continue to move forward with the approval to bring the site in compliance through the concept plan amendment and the PUD development plan amendment, that the city has the ability to go in and say, "You are in violation," and kind of make sure that these perimeter buildings and this landscaping is installed. Because staff's support of the concept plan amendment is really based on the fact that the interior uncovered storage will be screened, but that means that this landscaping and perimeter buildings are put into place. The applicant is here, and they do have a presentation as well, but I can answer questions now or after their presentation, whichever the commission would prefer.
How about if we go ahead with the applicant's presentation, and then we'll do questions? Thanks.
Can I just ever clarify something?
Sure, just something real fast.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, Karen Bryant. I think it was your very first bullet point. You mentioned that... I thought I heard you say that this property was annexed in 2016, but I thought it was 2006. Would you just clarify that real quick?
I apologize. It is 2006 was when it was originally annexed.
Okay, great.
Barb Brunk, Resource Conservation Partners, PO Box 1522, Longmont, Colorado. With me this evening is the applicant, Dan White, and Scott Dunn, the applicant's counsel. As Karen said, we're here to move this site along into compliance within the zoning code. You can see from this aerial, our request is to finish the things that are here and continue to allow the interior storage on the site with complete screening. Again, as Karen said, this is in the mixed use employment, and if it was coming forward under the new code that you're looking at, it would be a conditional use. So it's a PUD, which is pretty much a conditional use, and these are the kinds of things, the perimeter screening and those improvements, and the way the buildings look is all part of that application. Zoned PUD with specific conditions as it went through the process. These applicants purchased this property in 2016, and at the time they went, before they bought the property, they went down to City Hall and talked to staff and said, "Just to make sure everything was okay." And at that point, they discovered that the project was in violation of the zoning code. They purchased a property with full knowledge of that, and had been working with staff since the time they bought it to bring it into compliance. I think that they went forward with that comfort level because they understood that it was consistent with Envision Longmont, they had talked to staff about the kinds of things that were reasonable to make sure it was screened per the annexation agreement intention. And the other thing that is part of this conversation is council was talking about RVs not too long ago actually being parked on city streets. There's a need in our city for this kind of storage, people to have either uncovered or covered storage. It gives some affordable options for people who have vehicles, it lets them stay in town. The other place to go is out almost in Weld County, to be able to store your RV if you're a person who uses that recreation opportunity within our community. So it's a good location inside the city for people to be able to store their RVs and not have them in the neighborhood and have them be a nuisance, as it has been spoken about in the hearings we've been moving forward with. This is a comparison between the existing concept plan and the proposed concept plan, and truly, the only difference is that those interior buildings, these buildings, were required to be covered. There's still landscaping around the outside, there are still perimeter buildings to screen the storage. All those things are consistent with the existing plan. The goal is to allow them to continue to have uncovered screened storage within the interior of the property. Karen kind of briefed through the review criteria. It's the applicant's responsibility to make the case, so it's our hook to do that, and so I want to go through them specifically. Again, it's consistent with the LAPCP. Envision Longmont specifically talks about screened and uncovered storage. It also talks about commercial and office space. There will be an office in this application, there's a caretaker's residence, and there's a small business that will provide interior finish and remodeling for the RVs. It's not an automobile repair place, but it's a service place for RVs. So we're adding that kind of mix of uses that provide commercial services, as well as the storage into the property. It complies with applicable design standards, there are utilities. This site actually installed a portion of Anderson Street and contributed into the city process for the remainder of the street. They installed the utilities. There's right away along the north side of the property that was dedicated to the city and not yet developed, and they've cashed out of those improvements. So those pieces are in place. The intent and purpose of the zone, this is a PUD specifically contemplated to have storage, and we're going to try and to get this in compliance with that existing zone. The screening will make sure that adjacent properties are not impacted. If you're out there, because those buildings are tall and they're meant to have RVs inside them, once all of the screening is there, it's tall enough so you can't see past it into the interior of the site. So when you take the combination of the trees and the buildings, that interior is very well screened from the adjacent properties. Transportation plan is consistent with the streets that have been dedicated. Utilities, land use, transportation has all been taken care of. I think the key mitigation of potential impacts is, again, the perimeter buildings and the screening. No environmental impacts were identified as part of the property. A lot of trees and shrubs were existing and have been planted on this site, so if anything, we have some bird habitat and things like that around the outside that I think improves the environment, and they have a drainage plan in place, and all of that is covered as part of the PUD. We also have these goals that are in your staff report that Karen set forth about growth management. This is kind of already there, so we're trying to enhance the existing use and bring it into compliance, add support services to the existing use, so we're not going someplace else, so when people have their RV, they can stay there to have those support services. It also supports existing residents with access to recreation vehicles and services within the community. And as Karen said, if this is approved, the applicant will continue to bring the site into compliance. I have an image of that. These are the existing buffers, so you're looking south on the edge at Anderson Street, then along the eastern perimeter at Anderson Street, and then if you go down to where Anderson Street dead ends, you can see the northern perimeter of the building, and you can see where those existing trees are. And then the western perimeter, if you stop at the corner of Nelson, sorry, Rogers and Airport, you can see across, and that's the view to the south. These are the things that are in process and that are working on getting this site into compliance. So this building has... Since this area was taken, this building has already been constructed. This building is currently being disassembled to take away, so that it's making way for these buildings. The owners have a person who's going to also take this building away. So the things that need to be done are to build this building and this building to complete that perimeter. And then you can see along this edge where, reading the PUD in the initial application, there was a pretty dense border along the southern properties, so the applicant got credit for those trees and shrubs at the time. They're not there now. So we actually went out and did an inventory to see what had been planted and what's still there. And so that condition that we have to plant what's left there, you can kind of see where the holes are, especially along here, where they'll be adding those additional trees and shrubs, so that it'll be the buildings and the landscaping that will complete the screen. Caretaker's residence will be in here, the little service shop will be in the garage of that existing building, and then there's an office inside that building as well. Again, we believe that this is compliance with the criteria, and request that you forward the application onto city council with a recommendation for approval, with the understanding that the applicant will continue to work with staff to bring the site into compliance with the existing zoning by finishing those buildings and installing the perimeter landscaping as required. And we're here to answer your questions.
Thank you, Ms. Brunk. Any... I see we already have a light on from Commissioner Height with a question for either Planner Bryant or Ms. Brunk.
I do. Ms. Brunk, how big are... You call them support services? Is that... How big are those operations going to be?
Little. It's a little business. It's two guys, three guys from Boulder who are losing their lease, and they want to come to Longmont. And so it's a small business that kind of when somebody's roof leaks on their RV, when they need a new refrigerator, when they need some interior finish remodel, it's that business. And it will be inside.
That business will be enclosed?
Yes.
And will that business only be serving RVs that are stored on this site, or will they be bringing in RVs from elsewhere?
I believe they would like for people who live in the community to be able to bring their RV there and have it serviced.
Outside?
But again, yeah, but no motor vehicle repair, very clearly, just the stuff of an RV. Technical term.
Okay. And this, for me, is where the kind of the rubber hits the road, no pun intended. I understood from Ms. Bryant's presentation, and maybe I'm misunderstanding too, that screen storage, outdoor screen storage is allowed in this area, but outdoor RV storage has to be covered. Am I missing something in this area?
No.
Is it the PUD that requires this covered RV storage, the existing PUD?
At the time this property was annexed, some of you may remember, it was a zoning violation in Boulder County. It was there already. The applicant came to the city, and as a condition of annexation, it was... It's in the BLI zone, which does not allow outdoor storage at all. And so as a condition of the annexation, they were to do a planned unit development, and one of the things they had to do was cover the storage. And so that is the... It's on the concept plan, and it's in the annexation agreement.
So the zoning requirement is in their existing PUD?
Yes.
To have covered storage, and they're seeking to amend that to allow for screened storage in this mixed use employment area?
So it was screened and covered, so the perimeter screening was included in the original proposal. It was the interior, they're kind of pole barn type structures over the top. And again, when you go out there and see it, because of the way those perimeter buildings are constructed, you really can't see into that site. So it's kind of redundant to cover them, but because the annexation agreement was specific, and the P and Z recommendation was specific, and the concept plan was specific, it's in violation as it sits. And so that's why we're moving forward with this request.
I would presume, but I'd like to be clear on the record, they don't want to build these pole barns because of the cost, or is there some other reason you don't want to do that?
A couple of... The cost is one of them. What they would like to be able to do is have the choice, that if demand comes forward later and people have... Want to cover them at some point in time, that they could come and get a building permit to cover a portion of them. But it's expensive, and it's good for people to have that option, so they can have a less expensive place to park their vehicle, as opposed to a covered spot. It gives them variety in their business plan to serve their customers.
And I was counting RVs on the picture before the picture that's up right now. Can you flip back to that picture anyhow?
This one.
There are three sides that look like they're enclosed. What are...
These are covered buildings.
And what happens in those?
A portion... They stay. A portion of them have doors, and a portion of them are kind of a pole barn, so they're three-sided.
What happens in those buildings?
Storage of RVs.
So there is covered storage?
Yes.
On the perimeter?
On the perimeter.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Bruno.
Yeah, so I just had a couple of questions. I've actually been in the site, and you know, I'll attest to the fact that you can't really see in or out of this thing. So I was confused about one thing with where it says the existing structure currently being removed. That's just specifically that little like sort of shop that's off to the... Up in the upper left?
This building right here is going away to allow for these two buildings to be constructed.
Okay.
And as part of the PUD, that was designated as being removed at some point in the future.
Okay, okay, cool. And so those that are there are going to stay, and I just had a question about... This thing's pretty heavily fenced, right? Like, there's a pretty...
Actually, it isn't a fence. The buildings themselves form the perimeter.
Oh, okay.
And then there's a gate, so there's a controlled access, there's a key code that lets people get in and out.
I got you. So there's some fencing and gate sort of at those corners?
There's a little bit here, there's a little bit over here, there's a little bit here, and there's a gate right here, so that it... Again, it's secure for the people who leave their RV there.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Commissioner Polin.
Barb, how tall are the existing buildings?
16 feet.
16 feet, okay, thank you.
Commissioner Flig.
I have a question regarding the annexation agreement. Does it somehow have to be changed if the PUD gets... If we recommend approval on it?
The annexation agreement specifically calls for screening. It doesn't... And it references the concept plan. And because the concept plan shows the covered storage, we are going to go to city council and ask to amend the annexation agreement to include this concept plan and reference screened storage around the perimeter, as opposed to covered storage in the interior.
Commissioner Flig.
So Dan, do we have to do anything about that annexation agreement as part of our deliberations?
Chair Shernick, Councilmember Flig?
No.
One more question about what's getting stored there. Would boats with masts that would stand up higher than an RV ever be stored there?
No.
Okay, all right, thank you. Commissioner Polin.
Karen, when I go back to the original debate about this during the public hearing, Mr. Les Williams had spoken out against it because... Or actually spoke out in favor of that plan at that time because it had made notation of having covered storage. He was originally opposed to it because there originally was not going to be covered storage. I was wondering if we have heard from Mr. Williams? Because I'm just a little concerned, the fact that when this got passed, it was... It sounds like from the notes from that prior meeting that the covered storage was used to appease the residents of that area.
Through you, Chairman Shernick, Commissioner Polin. So as part of this application process, we did notice neighbors within 1,000 square feet of the property. It was posted, all of that. The only questions that... The only response that staff received was in support of the project, and that letter was included in your packet. As far as phone calls or anything else, we haven't heard anybody... I have not had anybody call and speak out against the project and removing the covered storage requirement.
Okay, this is a public hearing item, so I will... Thank you, Ms. Brunk. I'll open the public hearing part of the meeting. Nobody signed up. If there's anybody in the audience who's not part of the applicant team and would like to come forward, but I see no one, we will... Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing portion of this and go back to discussion and questions amongst the commission. Karen, maybe you can enlighten me. I am actually very confused, having read the minutes from the previous commission's decision to require covered storage in the middle of this. It seemed as though the issue was visibility from the... You know, from off-site. I don't see how covering anything solves the problem that was in front of the prior Can you tell me if you can see any reason or any function to that covering in that prior decision?
Chairman Shernick, so as part of reviewing this application, I did go back through all of the notes and all of the stuff we had, and originally, the covered storage on the interior was not something that staff was requesting. That was something that was put on... A condition that was put on by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Part of that was because there was a concern that with the RVs in the interior not being covered, that it would somehow possibly cause safety concerns with the Vance brand airport and runways from airplanes with glinting and reflection. The airport manager was sent a referral on this project for comment. They did not comment. To the best of staff's knowledge, we have had no complaints or any problems with that issue. But from staff's understanding, that's where... That's part of the reason for why they wanted the interior storage covered.
So the covering would reduce the amount of glare potentially off of that site? Is that what you're saying?
Correct. That was the thinking.
But they... Did they ever discuss the fact that it just provides more material for planes to crash into?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Okay. All right. Any other...
As opposed to the vehicles themselves?
Right, as opposed to the vehicles themselves. Any other comments, discussion, thoughts? Commissioner Bruno.
Yeah, I mean, I just... I'm pretty familiar with this, just because I helped a neighbor mine get a huge RV out of here one time, and I... You know, in trying to figure out what the spirit of the whole covering thing was, the airplane thing is a little bit enlightening. I mean, I don't really see how that's going to make a big difference, you know, compared to any... You know, it actually probably makes less of an impact than just any other part of the lot with the windshields and everything, so... You know, my impression when I was here was that this thing is pretty well... I mean, I just thought it was kind of like Stalag 17 style, like you couldn't really see out of it. I don't see how anybody could see into it. You know, personally, I just don't feel like there's really an issue with having this uncovered storage at all. I mean, these are all recreational vehicles, which if they're kept in good repair, there's really... You know, they're not going to be leaking. I mean, most people aren't going to want to pay for that covered storage, and I don't... You know, I guess I just don't see any issues with it. I think that it seems like a reasonable request.
Commissioner Teta.
Yeah, I... Suddenly, I'm aware that everybody feels like covered implies inside of a building, when I read that to mean underneath a tarp, perhaps. So strikes me as being a little bit misleading exactly what covered implies. I don't... I'm not sure why we... If what we meant was inside of a building, it wasn't stated that they would be warehoused inside of structures or... But that's just something I didn't get.
So Karen, just to clarify, based on Commissioner Teta's comments, covering, as you said before, was a pole barn solution that would be open on the sides, the only material that would be... It would be above the RVs, and it would be a solid material above the RVs. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And so the enclosed buildings, they are... Some of what we're seeing on this current slide, some of these buildings that exist are enclosed on all four sides and the roof, and some are enclosed on three sides plus the roof, correct?
Correct.
Okay, all right. Okay, all right, thank you. Commissioner Height.
I just wanted to point out that Commissioner Teta's question was addressed exactly in the 2016 planning commission minute notes where one of the commissioners dealt with exactly that issue as to whether or not covered meant with inside a building. And somebody else pointed out that it, the interior sites would be covered with canopies over the RVs as opposed to the perimeter site, the buildings would be enclosed with walls and roof. So they were supposed to be covered with a canopy. I like Commissioner Bruno's struggle to try to find anything wrong with this thing. I'm troubled, it originally was a PUD that specifically said there were going to be canopies on this interior area. I don't see why in 2017 our concerns, which I really believe are to be with seeing the storage from outside, can't be addressed by adequate exterior screening, which I think the applicant is willing to do with filling in with trees. I do have a question, Karen, which is, you know, with respect to the small business of repairing RVs, is that permitted within this zone?
Through you Chairman Sharnick, Commissioner Height, yes. That is permitted within the zone, but it is not part of the, the approved development plan. So they would have to get that approved as part of the amendment to the P D, the, the development plan to allow, one, the uncovered storage in, in the interior and also to allow for that additional use.
And I didn't see in our packet that we were necessarily considering this additional use of the, of the business. Is the applicant, has the applicant made that application? Is the applicant, does the applicant need to amend its application?
Do you want to say one? The staff and applicant in conversations decided to move the concept plan amendment through first. And the concept plan amendment is, really only deals with the covered storage. The PUD amendment plan application will come through if the concept plan amendment is, is corrected. And at that time, the amendment, the plan amendment will involve adding that additional use, which is allowed, as well as removing the covered storage.
It's okay, I think I understand. Or thank you. So the amendment of this concept plan doesn't require the, having to address this single business, which can be addressed at the PUD amendment phase. Thank you very much. So back to my fellow commissioners. Somebody tell me why I should object to this, if you see that. Thank you.
Commissioner Bruno.
Karen, my recollection is that there's already a shop on this property, that, that one little building is, is maybe the people, the caretaker's shop or something like that. It looked like there was already kind of a, some sort of a light mechanic use going on there, you know, to some degree. When I saw it, I thought, maybe I'm not remembering correctly, but...
There was a welding shop in that, in the, existing, one of the existing buildings at the time these guys purchased the property. They're in the process of removing that.
It's already vacant.
It's already gone.
Okay.
And then that building is going to be removed. So again, they've been chipping away at trying to get the site into compliance. It was an interesting property at the time they purchased it.
I guess my point being that I didn't see how that would be any different, but since it's gone and now we're talking about bringing something back, it, it is, it would be a change. So, never mind.
To Commissioner Height's point, I don't see any, any reason why to do anything but approve this. And, and in fact, we have an owner who is working very above board with, with the city on bringing this property finally into some form of compliance, which apparently hasn't been for over a decade. So, you know, that's to be commended. And I'll, Commissioner Goldberg, make some more comments. I, I, no, please go ahead.
I'm not sure why we're doing this. Then to answer Commissioner Height's request, I am struggling to define a reason to, to oppose this project. So without further ado, for the reasons identified by my fellow commissioners and for the reasons identified in Planner Bryant's presentation, meeting the review criteria, I will just go ahead and recommend, what am I trying to do, recommend approval of PZR 2017-32B. And instead of reading them, I'll just defer to with the conditions being listed, one through three in our packet.
And I'll go ahead and second that. So we have a motion on the floor. Any further discussion? Commissioner Paulin?
Yeah, I still struggle with the pack because I really do place an emphasis on what some prior board has done and worked on. Given the fact that this has gone in front of the public and that there has been no further public comment on, I will be in approval of this. It just, I do struggle with the fact because a prior commission had put a regulation on it. So given the fact that it's been 10 years, it's hard for me to say what's, what's a good time to go back and review a decision by another board. Is it five years, 10 years, 20 years? I don't know. Given the fact that we have taken this back to the public, they've had a chance to speak and they have not chosen to speak, I will be voting for this.
Further discussion? Seeing none, let's take a vote. And that passes unanimously, seven to zero. This item will now be forwarded to the Longmont City Council for action. If you're unfamiliar with council procedures and intend to appear before council, please contact the Planning Division for further information at 303-651-8330. Thank you, Ms. Brunk. Thank you to the applicant team who's here tonight. Thank you, Karen. We will proceed with the rest of our agenda once I get to it. Ah, okay. Final call for public invited to be heard. No one's signed up. Jane? Nope, nobody signed up. Nobody in the audience. We'll close the public invited to be heard. Any items from the commission? Commissioner Goldberg.
Yeah, I guess I had a question for Planning and Services Director Jenny Marsh. It sounds like we had a recent vote repeal and overturn by City Council. I just wonder if this is a good time for you to offer any perspective or words of wisdom or any feedback relating to that, or maybe we're not even allowed to.
Chairman Sharnick and members of the commission, so last night, we finished the appeal. We actually started it two weeks ago. Councilmember Santos was absent for the first evening, so the council tabled that until he returned, which was last night's meeting. You know, they did some deliberation. Obviously, that's out on the website if you guys would like to kind of look at either of those meetings and really, you know, kind of judge for yourselves, I guess, what the deliberations were. The owner came forward and gave a presentation of his project, which I believe may have been different than the presentation you received from the consultant at your meeting. So that may be of interest to you as well. I'm not sure if those were different. I wasn't here for that, that presentation. I guess I'd encourage you to go take a look and then if you have questions, I'm happy to, to meet with you guys or talk to you about it. But it did go forward and I believe it was, was it five to two or six to one?
Six to one.
I think it was six, one. Yeah, Erin, Erin would know.
Sorry.
No, you're fine. So six, one, I believe. Commissioner Christensen dissenting.
Okay. Any other items from the commission? Seeing none. Next thing is our council representative is not here. Any items from you, Joni, as Development Services Director?
I don't believe so. We will try to limit the next three months to one meeting per month and really try to continue focusing on where we started this evening with land development code and also not just overviews and presentations, but then getting into some of those policy-related questions and really kind of trying to get some opinions and thoughts from you guys on some of the questions that Tarek and Matt noted that are at the bottom in the footnotes. So if you go back through those and have notes, we'd love to hear that ahead of the October meeting so we can get that into our updated draft that Tarek and Matt are going to keep working on. So, and again, if you have questions about other pieces and where things are at, let Brian or Erin know. Erin is also co-managing that project now with Brian. So we have a couple people working diligently to press that forward.
Joni, actually in the pre-meeting, Brian had actually indicated that we would be meeting on October 25th to go over the items.
So I'm not, I'm going to try not to have two meetings, but the meeting will be the 25th instead of the regular then, right?
Ah.
I think that's what you're saying to me.
No, no, I asked him because he did say there would be two, I mean, I did ask him in the fact that that would be a second meeting.
Okay.
Okay, well, I'm going to try to not have that happen. We'll see how that goes, okay?
I just want to try to...
Yeah, this is, the 25th would be the second one. And I think that we are kind of at a point where a lot of the projects that are currently in the development cycle, which volume is high, we received 18 submittals last week, which is a lot. But a lot of those are actually at the staff level and administrative process, either they've already been to you as preliminary development plans or they are site plans that we're approving at the staff level. So trying to, and then we also have a bunch of stuff that's at council for annexation. So sometimes we get in a spot where we don't have as much here just in time for the holidays.
Great, thank you, Jenny. Commissioner Goldberg.
While we're on that topic, just because I have the dates in front of me, the November and December dates, you anticipate remaining the same, 15th and 20th of each month?
Okay, I think that's yes. Okay, I think that's it. Without any debate or disapproval, we will be adjourned.